So we're going to go ahead and begin this briefing of the Mason County Commission for the week of June 28, 2021. We have switched up our agenda a little bit and it will read, there will be no closed session. We will do support services first, then we will move into therapeutic courts and they're the same. Any objection back commissioners? Okay, so with that, let's go ahead and move right into support services. Frank Pinter.
Thank you commissioners. The first item we have is from Jennifer in regards to recommendation of paying off the building eight inter loan, inter fund loan.
Thank you Frank. Good morning commissioners. So I am bringing forward a recommendation to pay off building eight. The lower floor that was purchased in an inter fund loan by resolution sixty five dash one zero. To county roads, I'm recommending that we pay this loan off for several different reasons. The first one is the cash is available in the REIT fund to pay it off. It's unobligated. It's about three hundred and eight thousand. And a little bit of interest that we were not much. For this year, probably a couple hundred dollars. And the other reason to pay it off is the county will save about thirty two thousand dollars in interest over a nine year period. It was a twenty year loan originally. And then the third reason to pay it off is that the inter fund loans are really supposed to be no more, no longer than three years. And so if we do this. Another thing I would recommend is to do another budget amendment, which we, we need to do anyway because. We have a couple of things that need to go in there. The biggest one is for Fund One Seventeen. There's a three million dollar grant that they need expenditure authority for. So I want to ask that we put that on the August seventeenth. Agenda to do the public hearing for, for that. And I'll bring that forward as well at the next briefing.
I'm supportive commissioners. You okay?
Yeah, absolutely. I like this idea. I appreciate Jennifer taking a look at it and bringing it forward.
Love the idea paying off debt. Awesome.
And as she said, we're supposed to only be doing three years on those anyway.
Yeah, so this will bring us into compliance with that. This has been ran through the audit committee and the finance committee, just so you're aware. And then one other thing that I want to bring up since we're. On the topic of audit committee. So there's been some, some talk of starting an IT steering committee and we have a meeting this afternoon to. Get that talk going. So I wanted to. Run that by you commissioners and, and see. How you felt about that? And I want to kind of mirror it after the, the audit committee. You know, have one commissioner on there, the IT lead who is TJ Cannon. And then the central services manager Diane and then Ross McDowell as the IT manager. So that's kind of what I'm, what I'm thinking and we'll have further discussions this afternoon about it. But wanted to run that by you and see what you all thought and if there's a commissioner that you have in mind. We could work that into the resolution when we bring that forward.
Yeah, I think it's important that we have a commissioner on there. If nobody else would volunteer, I would do it, of course, but I will ask if somebody else has a hankering for this.
I, I'd be interested in doing it.
Okay, Commissioner Trask, are you comfortable with us appointing Commissioner Shudy?
Absolutely.
As am I. Congratulations Commissioner Shudy, you have the job. No, actually, I, I thought it would be you in the first place because you are the one that's the technical one out of, out of the three commissioners.
We'll give it a go.
Yeah.
Great, okay.
He brought, he brought computer, computers into the commission chamber.
My predecessor, my predecessor didn't have a computer.
That's right. All right, thank you Commissioner Shudy. Jennifer, anything else on that?
No, I'll, I'll work that into the resolution and we can have further discussions about it. This afternoon and make sure everybody else is on board as well. So thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you. Frank?
Next item is Ross. He's got two RCO projects. And then an item regarding the R zero. Arc. Ross?
Good morning commissioners. I just wanted to give you an update. We've closed out two of our RCO grants recently. The first one that started quite some time ago, which was the Hood Canal. School district for the multipurpose field. That one is sixteen dash nineteen twenty nine. That project was, was a. A pretty spendy, spendy project that was a nine hundred and sixty six thousand dollar project. Which two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that came from RCO grants. The rest of that came from the school and through some other donated funds from the school. If you haven't been out there yet, it's well worth taking a look out there. They put a lot of extras into the field. Besides it just being a football and lacrosse and soccer field. They did put a lot of stuff in it for track and field. They have a discus and a shot put. In a long, long jump, triple jump pit, which is very, very nice. So. This is, is one of the projects that will be open to the community. So the community can use this. This, this field and the track that's around the field. It is, it is actually beautiful. They've done a very good job on this one. So that one was completed. So got atta boys?
Ross, on that one there, I know it's different if they haven't asked for it yet. I don't think we want to recommend it, but. The one we did up in Belfer, I am tied to a committee for the rest of my life. Is Commissioner Shudy tied to a committee yet?
I believe he will be with Hood Canal, yes.
Just give him a heads up, let him know how that works.
Right, anytime you have a community organ or a community project like this. RCO makes it that you have to have a committee that meets at least once a year minimum. To go over to make sure that people can get in, that it's not a problem. This one is, it stays open year round. That's one nice thing here. There's no closed gates or locked gates on it. It, it does have fencing, but it's just, it's, it is a very open field, open to community. So I will let you know when the, when we have the meeting with them. It usually ran through the school. So we'll do it just once a year.
Thanks Commissioner.
So we, we did get some atta boys from Kim from RCO. About this. She really liked that we were right on top of it because this was a long one. This one started in, I think it started in sixteen. So that's, it's been a while because they had a couple of. Couple of things had to change in, in their project when they were doing it. So. Looks good though. And our second one is obviously our MCR irrigation project. That has been completed. That is project number eighteen dash twelve sixty nine. That one we, we actually changed a little bit in that one also to the better. We were figuring that we are going to have to get three phase electric in. And it ended up there is a, there's a transformer that you can use. That will, it'll reduce or it'll, it'll split single phase into three phase on the motor that we had. So we purchased that and saved some money and that money that we saved, we put right back in and were able to. Irrigate the entire inside of the park, not just the seven fields, but also the inside area of the park. So that was a little bit of a change. This got done actually by December. It was finished. The guys were able to work. Through the COVID with being outside and there was a few times where we had to stop and. There was a few times we had extra people because other projects they had had to stop. So they were able to get this done in a hurry. It started in August and it finished in December. So all seven fields are good to go. It's now, everything is run off of an app on a phone. So Bud can turn them on, turn them off whenever he needs to and. As long as the wifi is working and the wifi is working pretty good out there. TJ came out and did some bonus work on it for us and. Once again, we got some atta boys from Kim. She really likes working with us out here at Mason County. And is really looking forward to other RCO and YAF grants for us here. So. If you haven't had a chance, there are some photos that are attached to this, but the photos don't do it justice as far as looking at it. It is green out there. Currently, obviously we're looking at one of the big things here was. The last couple of years with all the leaks that we had, we had a holacious water bill. We're looking for our water bill to go down quite a bit because we are on city water out there. So. That's our big goal for that. So that's our two RCO grants that are going on that have been completed and are now finished. And done. We've, all the money's been received and, and all, everything's been given to everybody. So we're good to go on those.
I appreciate that. So Ross, eventually we'd like to have our conversations on what to do next. Yo, my folks up there are biting at the bit to have some conversations about getting that football field. You know, there's always arguments that we, that they would like in North Mason turf like they have down in South Mason, irrigation like they have in South Mason. Lights like they have in South Mason, but at the same time, I think it's more important personally, but we'll have a discussion further. About just getting services like football, baseball field or football soccer field might be more important. With a concrete skate park at the same location seems like a concept or, and or maybe like they have in. Going towards Gig Harbor, they have that little water park thing, but I'd, I'd like to look at the liabilities on something like that before we ever got too deep. Because you know me, I'm a liability guy. I'm not a, I'm a little afraid of stuff like that, but sure, it's pretty awesome. And when you're talking a hundred and ten, fifteen degrees, it seems appropriate today, although tomorrow in the winter I may not be in favor of it at all.
Well, there's nothing wrong with looking at a liability. That's always a, a big thing because there's big dollars that go along with that. So that's not a problem. I would love to look in that and I did, I did reach out to that family that's looking at doing the donation. And I have a meeting with them hopefully next week. He was going to be out of town for a little bit and then come back. But I did get a nice phone conversation with him. So that was, that was good. Any other questions on the RCO grants? Okay, if we. Up next is the R zero arc UV light disinfectant machine. That you guys got to see last, last briefing. You wanted me to bring it back on to have you guys talk a little bit about it and I also. Attached to the briefing, the, the videos, the links for the videos and then also the. The estimates on the cost on both the arc zero disinfectant. Bulb. Feature and then also the one that's for the arc air, which is the air purifier. I put both of those with the, with this for discussion.
Russ, how many? How many of these would you be recommending for our, for our facilities or what do you think the need is?
Well, looking at the, the art zero for the, the one that's the actual, the light one, the bigger one. I would think at least, probably at least two to possibly three. One being in building ten that they could use at the new building. They could use that in there. It's a large area. It can clean pretty quick and pretty easy. The other one in the old courthouse. Because that's another one where there's multiple rooms they can clean and then one that could be used as a float around to some of the other. Other facilities. As far as the air ones, I, I thought those, looking at those, they're, they're actually. I think they're a little spendy, but, but it looks like those could be ones that. We could use maybe as a fill in for some of the other offices like in building one. To use those in the different offices that are there and use it also in, in a, like maybe. One or two of those for each office, probably one for each one of the offices up, up on the second floor. One in the chamber. One in the back area there by the. The clerk of the board area, elections would need one. So that you're starting to look at, there's going to be quite a few of those and those are, those are kind of pricey. At, you know, fourteen hundred a piece. So. I would say probably you'd need at least twenty of those to fill in all the blanks. But I, I think we could do either one, use all three of the larger units. Or else get twenty of the, of the smaller units. I don't know that we have to really do a, we can do a combination. If you want to, but they are, they can be used separate.
Well, and then they're not interchangeable. From everything I saw, one, you know, one is just a, will help keep the air cleaner. The other one actually hits the surfaces.
Correct, that is correct.
I am more supportive, you know, I hadn't thought of two, but it, the truth is it probably is necessary if we're going to do it to have two. Because one should stay at the, at the courts. That makes sense because that's where it's going to be used all the time.
Who, who would be using these? Like who would, who would we, who would we be have like? You know, operating buildings?
We could actually have the cleaning staff do it. We can show them how to do it themselves when they come in there at night. At the buildings when nobody's in there and do the cleaning that way. We can teach them how to do it. It's, it's a simple push one button and walk away. It, I don't think it's too difficult to do. I know our facility staff do not probably have time to do it. And plus they're out of there before, you know, they're not in it at eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night. To do that. So it would have to be the.
So our cleaning is happening during the day now.
Yeah, that's what I was going to just mention. Their cleaning is done during the day now.
All cleaning is done during the day? There's no night cleaning anymore? Okay.
And we might want to consider maybe three of the large units. But one of them coming out of Public Works financing. Because they have that big area up there they use for training and other community meetings and stuff are done up there. We have our main building here that the courthouse, the stuff that we have here that we use for our chambers is used for many different things. And it could be used as a hub for moving it from place to place when necessary. Could maybe go upstairs for a while or something like that during the night or however we're doing things at the end of work hours. And then the other one stay at the court buildings, but you have two court buildings. How are we going to do that?
Right, I, I wasn't, I, I didn't originally think that building one would, would use one, but yeah, then we're up to four. We probably would need four then that way. Right?
I, I'm hesitant. I'm, I just envision us buying something and spending money that we don't need to spend. And then these things are put into a closet and forgotten about. So I would need, I would need some, some positive reinforcement that they would absolutely be used and that they. That Mason County need them.
I think the judges would, of the ones that we're talking about, I think the judges would make sure that they get used in theirs. Just what we went through this last year and dealing with the judges and how they felt about their, their areas. I think they would pretty much. Make sure it's used there.
The big question is who is going to, who is going to actually do it, do it, I think is the one thing they, they had. They were, they were very big and you're very correct. They were very big on making sure everything was clean, but they didn't want to do it and their staff didn't want to do it.
Yeah, but it's different between pushing a button, start it up and naturally cleaning. There's two different.
That is true. That is true.
May, maybe what we can do is take this back. Into consultation and work with the judges, both superior and district court. And then come back again to the board with some formal recommendations as to how many, who's going to manage it. Or not it meets the department's needs.
Let, let's wait till we hear from Kevin first though, to see where he's even at on it. Because we haven't landed on any, whether we're even interested or not. Commissioner Trask is, is not interested at this time. I'm partially interested. I'm not even a hundred percent. In that camp either with that price tag that we're talking for four especially, but I'd love to hear what Commissioner Shudy's thinking right now.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, I'm interested to the extent that I would be, you know, wanting to know who and how it's going to be deployed in the, in the county. I think. I think that's a, a big question mark, you know, kind of the Commissioner Trask's point, you know, if, if we buy it and it just sits. Because we don't know who's going to, who's going to use it, you know, that would be, I think that would be a shame. So I think we need to do a little bit more work on, on the proposal and, and just sort of what it looks like operationally for us. I'm all for. Figuring out how we keep our public areas clean. I think there are benefits to it beyond COVID. Certainly, you know, in, in the cold and flu season. So definitely, definitely see a lot of value there. But you know, if we can't, if we can't get over the hurdle of. You know, who's going to be using it in the buildings and, and exactly how many we need and, and all that kind of stuff, then. We're just kind of spinning our tires. So I would, I would be open to staff doing a little bit more work on that side of it and then bringing back a tighter. Recommendation for us to consider and. Price tag is steep. I mean, it'd be, you know, hundred and twenty five thousand probably by the time we're all said and done. You know, but if, if that's. It's, it's hard to put, it's hard to put a value on. Cleanliness. As well, so, but just like a little bit more.
Well, one note, the, the air purifier, that one you just turn on and let it stay on. That is pretty much stay on. You just turn it off. It, you can leave it on all night. Keep it going. But the, yeah, you're, that is so true about the big one. We will have to, and we also have to have it move. And it is movable and somebody has to do it. And with that, I didn't know that we didn't have this, the nighttime. Maintenance. I didn't know that they all switched to days. I thought we'd still had both, so.
And if I remember.
Plan out of the water, yeah.
If I remember from the presentation though, it was explained to us that those others are more used to keep the, the length of sterility going. Not to make it sterile, but instead to, you know, to make it four hours that it's only lost ten percent.
It's an extender. It's.
And so just by itself, I'm not a big fan. Unless we had a high, if we had an area, you know, if we were to do it, to have it actually in the courthouse itself, that would make sense. Because it's a high area, a high traffic area constantly being used or whatever. But for the rest of the buildings, I don't see it because it's not, it doesn't. Sterilize the area, it just keeps it going longer. Okay, so, so we're going to bring it back, go and look at the different options to see how it will go. We have at least two that are interested in continuing the conversation. And make sure you, you touch base with Public Works if you don't mind, because that is a big area that is used all the time, a lot more than anything we have here.
Randy, just real quick, what's your, what's your hesitation? You mentioned that you weren't, you weren't.
Money. I'm just being honest. It's the idea of money and, and it, it's not that I haven't taken Commissioners Trask's words to heart because there is always that possibility. So I have, I am considering that too. I do think that it's going to be. Very important to have, not just for COVID though. I do, the reason why I am interested is because as you said, the cold season, but. We don't know what's going to come next, but being able to be prepared to have that and make sure we keep our people safe. But boy, it's different looking at it at twenty five thousand and moving the thing around and looking at a hundred thousand. It's a lot different. If we were, if we're talking the twenty six thousand, I'd be all for it today. Let's go forward. But I have a harder time. I'm choking a little bit on the size.
And I understand that the funds can come from FEMA, but if, if it's not going to be used, I'd rather not spend. Money that are out there.
Yeah. Well, please explain, explain the FEMA part a little bit long, a little bit further. Is there a grant available that would pay for this outright or what are we talking?
So Frank, you wanted to step on that one or Ross?
This one can be purchased through the, through the FEMA COVID. Grant that we do have already. And I believe it's also with the new grant that we got the twelve point something. Maybe that that one can also, this can also touch underneath that.
Jennifer, she, she showed her face.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that FEMA will only pay for that portion that's covered under however long this. The life of this COVID nineteen lasts. It will only pay for that portion of it. So let's say. That this equipment has a ten year life and you know, they, they may only pay for. A year or even shorter, six months, however, long from the time we purchase until they decide that the project is closed. So it's a very small amount that is eligible under FEMA. So I just wanted to add that.
How does that work if you're not doing it on a lease basis, but you're doing it on purchase?
Under the lease, they would pay for, I mean, kind of the same way they would pay for whatever portion is eligible. For the time period of the, the lease.
Don't they use them to depreciate?
Yeah, so I, that's more the question I'm asking is what Commissioner Trask touched on. Are they deciding on the, if we purchase it outright to do it on a depreciated scale?
Yeah, exactly. And we don't know what that is at this time. It could be. It could be quite a bit. It could be not much. So I mean, it's, it's unknown. So I just wanted to throw that out there. For your consideration. Welcome.
All right. We need anything else on that? Next?
Thank you commissioners. Thank you Ross.
Thank you Ross.
You're welcome.
The next item we have is an ARPA update and what I wanted to do was to talk a little bit about. Our last briefing. So previously in our briefing. A commissioner mentioned the word wash. For funding sources. And I just wanted to clarify what that reference was.
And just, you know, I asked him to do this, so that's a personal. Go ahead Frank.
So in clarification, what was meant by wash is a mechanism that the county used for CARES Act funding, which was used appropriately. So earlier this year, the federal government via the CARES Act reimbursed Mason County. Five million, two hundred and eleven thousand dollars roughly of CARES Act eligible funds. In request the reimbursement, Mason County charged to the CARES Act. Three million, five hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. Most of what was paid back. From the CARES Act. And it was reimbursed, the requestment was reimbursed for payroll expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services. And similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID nineteen health, public health emergency. So it was allowable under the CARES Act to charge all of, of a big chunk of the salaries for the sheriff's office deputies. So these payroll expenses were costs that Mason County budgeted in twenty twenty and had, would have been obligated to pay. Unless the county would have laid off public safety, public health, healthcare, human services or other similar employees. So as a result, what ended up happening was Mason County put three point six million dollars. Into its ending fund balance, which is now available for us to spend. On something into the future. So that was what was referenced by the term wash. I don't know how much of that would be available for ARPA funding. It doesn't have that broad stroke functionality that the CARES Act funding had. In terms of retroactively going back and paying for things that. Mason County would have paid for or budgeted for, i.e. supplanting for dollars. So I'm not sure how much of that we can do for the ARPA, but that was the reason or the, of the. That was what the term wash meant.
And if we did, that we don't just leave it in the fund, in their general fund, but instead have a line item that we can put in. The money directly into so that we can expend it however we feel it'd be best spent. Instead of just sitting in the ending fund balance of the general fund. For example, for jail or whatever else we find that we're going to do. If we're going to do any of that stuff. We really should not just let it sit in the ending fund, but put it for that separate opportunity to reinvest it.
So that was just a clarification.
Thank you Frank. I appreciate you. My words were not too eloquent, but that happens to me quite often, especially on Mondays.
Our next item is a.
I just, I wanted to make, I wanted to make just two, two quick comments, just so that we're all, we're all clear here. Appreciate the clarification there, number one. Number two. You know, I, I, I still think two things. One, it's not our money. It's not intended to. You know, be solely used to do things that benefit the county. And when I say the county, I mean county proper, our, our budget. I think there's a lot of flexibility in the way that the law was written, that we could put it to use for really. Impactful projects in the community that help people, help the economy, get people to work, put infrastructure into the community. help the economy, get people to work, put infrastructure into the community. And I think we've already received a number of really, uh, impactful project requests, um, and have a, have a SEDS list that is perfectly aligned with uh, what the intent of this legislation is. And so I, I just urge the commission, uh, let's not get clever about how we do these things. Let's be really super transparent about how we, um, you know, discuss and deliberate, um, and evaluate needs and work with our community partners to um, put this money to work in the community is, as it comes available to us. And so clarification is really helpful. Um, but you know, my, my intent with it is to, is to utilize the flexibility that was written into the law. Um, to put the work to, to put the money to work in the community.
And I would agree, Commissioner, uh, just so you know, the, the impactful, uh, uh, projects, number one on the list. But at the same time, if we get down to the point like we did before, where we were just making sure the money gets spent, I don't want it spent on project number one twenty that is not the best way to spend it is, is my issue. And if, rather than that happen, I'd rather us uh, have a, the ability to recycle it through to make sure that it doesn't just go to projects that aren't necessary. And also, uh, I'm still hoping that I had requested that when we go to spend this money, that we have a community forum that, uh, we ask the community some of their, their highest priorities for some of this. It isn't every day that we get money like this to work with. So having, you know, some input from the community right now could be a very, very positive.
So I'll ask again, what I asked when you first brought that up is what does that look like? What do you want to do with that? How would you envision that rolling out?
Well, some of them, if we take, we have a list of projects right now, if we have the projects like we have now, uh, and maybe there may be some others we have. You know, we're going to be able to open up here shortly and I'm hoping that we will be able to have meetings, maybe in a couple of different locations, uh, to have them give us our priorities and the stuff we already have. And then at the same time, maybe to give us their priorities, the things we hadn't thought of that may fit within it. You know, leaving for, I'm not a big fan of the old sticker thing, but at the same time, there is a time and a place for it. If it actually has value to where you can actually let the community decide what they think is most important, because usually when we do that sticker thing on the wall for our top projects, there's no money that comes with it. This time we actually have funding to do it. It'd be the first time I've ever participated in one where it wasn't just done for laughs.
And so I think that's, there's some value in that. I just, I would be cautious about, um, the, the time that it would take to do that and some of the restraints that we have on at least getting the first round of money, um, receipted and, and, um, you know, expended. The other, the other part of that is, um, as I, as I said before, uh, if we use the SEDS list to, um, you know, determine priorities and, and projects. Uh, you know, that has been publicly vetted, uh, both through the EDC's, uh, solicitation process and through the public agencies that submitted projects. And then again, through our own internal, uh, public hearing process here at the county. So if, if you, Commissioner, if anyone wants to work with, uh, staff on, on putting something together that you think can be done in a, in a timely manner so that we can get that feedback, I think that's great. But, um, I think at least in this initial part, we have, we have publicly vetted projects, um, that, that make a lot of sense. So I look forward to more information on that when, when you're able to bring it forward.
Yeah, I just want to remind you that, uh, on that SEDS list, they were not prioritized purposely. So that's where the community would come in. Uh, the products are important to us, but the prioritization still needs to be done. Uh, what year, how long do we have to expend this money, Frank? This first round?
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty.
Projects have been approved uh, by twenty twenty-four, they can extend out to twenty twenty-six. So that's one thing that we definitely need to keep an eye on. These are, i- if we decide on projects, those are projects that we have to make sure that they are, um, in the works, if not completed. And then, um, in the end, that they meet all the guidelines that are, are, are in the, the, uh, the guideline.
So is your recommendation, Commissioner, uh, that it be looked at, uh, that it needs to be basically ready to go contracted twenty twenty-four and it must be completed by twenty twenty-six?
I don't know that that's my recommendation. That's, that's the guidance that we were given.
I, that's right. I meant, you're the one that read it. So from what you read, you're saying that that's the necessary parts?
From what I understand, um, if, uh, Paige sent out a, a list of things that, the guidelines that, uh, came from the treasury and they are in our special fund for this, this money. So that's going to help us really decide where we can, where we can't spend the money, um, who it needs to go for, it's prioritized. So we really need to, to watch that and really follow what, what the guidelines, what the treasury has told us that we can and can't do. The one thing I don't want to have is, you know, have the federal audit and then finding, or had any findings on us. So we need to be very careful and just remember that this is not our money. This is the people's money. And so we need to be responsible and, and, and make sure that we're doing what, what, what the public need, what, what Mason County as a whole needs.
I would agree.
And just to let the board know, uh, we did receive just under six million dollars last week as the first tranche of the funding.
Yeah. And thanks, you know, thanks to, to our treasurer and to our finance committee and to all of our staff, because they are doing a, an incredible job keeping us on top of this and, and working together. We have some great meetings. And I, I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm, I'm honored. I'm, I'm very privileged to be a part of that group. So like kudos to the group. They are, they are awesome.
Thank, thank you. So we'll be bringing that forward as a uh, follow-up meeting on a regular basis to discuss priorities and how to continue moving forward with the um, utilization of those ARPA funds. Next item we have is a, a quick update from, uh, Proffman in regards to the executive search. Uh, there's an, a timeline that's been defined. So sometime this week, Proffman will be sending back to the board a, uh, profile for the posting of the position of county administrator. And, uh, once that, uh, the commissioners are in agreement as to that posting, they will start the advertising and that direct mailing. And around August first, they anticipate closing the application process and begin the process of reviewing the applicants. And, um, then doing a, a follow-up interview process. So this is just an update as far as the timing is concerned.
Any questions for Frank on any of this?
I, I do have one more quick item, if I may.
Okay.
Um, this is in regards to the masking, unmasking process. We talked last week about doing a, an email to all of the county employees directing or giving some direction in regards to the masking and the unmasking of, um, our, our employees. The, I want to confirm from the board that you would prefer that we go through an email process and a, and, and electronic signature process to, um, review or to receipt the attestations. Um, those attestations are protected under EEOC or, um, privacy as a medical record. So these are not disclosable to the, a public disclosure request. Um, but this would then go out this afternoon to all of our employees, receipt back via electronically, an electronic signature to the attestation and that would be kept by HR and nobody else would need to have that documentation available to them.
Yeah, this ADA, uh, aspect when we, Frank, uh, called me and we were discussing it the other day is a game changer and a, a great help, I think. It helps to protect all the staff that's in there and their privacies. By having it go directly to HR and not to different managers and different lead people and stuff all the way up the chain. Uh, that's a big, that's a big positive for, uh, keeping people's, you know, privacy and their rights together. So I'm very happy with the new change. I think it's the way it should go, uh, and it's a responsible way to handle it. What do you think, Commissioners?
Just real quick, I, I am so happy that we're finally getting this done. I think it was overthought and we should have had it in, in, um, place right after the governor said that we could do this and got, got the guidance from the CDC. So let's get it out there.
I agree. Good. Thank you, Commissioners.
So, uh, on another note, on the Commissioner discussion, there's going to be a, a discussion coming up, uh, today from the fire, uh, departments and fire, the chiefs and fire marshals regarding fireworks and stuff. I've been talking to, uh, Dave about it also. And, you know, one of the things we want to keep in mind is whether or not we want to set up for a special meeting for tomorrow. We won't have their actual recommendations until later today, but if we set up for tomorrow, it'll make the, because we have to have twenty-four hours, it will be able to make the paper so we can get whatever information we have out there, out there uh, for the people before the fourth of July. I know myself that one of the recommendations that I was discussing with David, that Dave was, uh, supportive of at this point, but he hasn't talked to the other fire chiefs and stuff, is the idea of bringing it down to one day of use. The idea of cutting it out completely for sales is kind of not realistic around here because they'll go to the, to the tribal areas and buy fireworks that are not safe and sane. Uh, class safe, safe and sane fireworks. So it actually puts us more in danger. But being able to at least limit the amount of fireworks that are shot off for, to a day instead of a week uh, can be very beneficial to our community. I'm not usually even in favor of cutting that, cutting that back, but with this particular weather situation, it seems like a no-brainer to me, although our fire load isn't as bad as you would think. The heat's been horrible, but, um, the fuel amount is not as high as, as it had been as of today. We're still moderate, believe it or not, but I think that'll change right away. So what do you guys think about that?
About setting the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of that. I'll, I'll reserve judgment until I hear what the, uh, fire chiefs recommend and, um, you know, go from there. But I'm, I'm supportive of setting a meeting.
Commissioner Trask?
Yeah, so am I, um, I have a, a day planned tomorrow, a tour of the Skoko Valley and, and the estuarian things, but I will absolutely, um, make room for the, a special meeting.
It has to be after, because we can announce it now. Uh, do you have a time that you would prefer?
Um, the earlier.
Over the film real quick.
Yeah, the earlier the better. If we could do it at ten, that would be great.
Um, let's see, is she on here? Diane, can you get that out so we could be available for ten or, or is that not enough time? Fifteen, seventeen minutes for you?
Yeah, I can send out an agenda this morning, say in the special meeting to consider emergency restrictions for fireworks. You can meet tomorrow at ten.
Okay, you can do it in seventeen minutes. You rock. Uh, agreed, Kevin? Ten o'clock?
Yep, perfect.
Okay, that's what we're going to do. Any other Commissioner discussion? Then let's go ahead and move on to the next one. Uh, therapeutic courts, Renee and Judge Goodell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, and I'm just going to let Renee talk and then that's, this is Judge Goodell. And so the Commissioners know, I have to head over to building ten for a ten o'clock, uh, hearing this morning. So I'm just going to let Renee talk and then right after that, uh, Jim Mattson will be, uh, talking about some funding on the juvenile court side. So I hope everybody has a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. So Renee, uh, to make it quick for the judge, we, we are pretty much up on it. If you want to just touch on the main points and we'll try to move you forward.
The main point is this is just our next amended contract with CJTA that will run July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, we did get additional funds this year um, in the amount of, just a second, I gotta find, I lost it here, eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six, which brings our total amount up to one eighty-one nine, one eighty-one, one ninety-six for the next two years. I just need a approval to sign the contract and have one of you sign it.
Commissioner, are you, uh, are you guys comfortable putting on our next agenda?
Good with me.
Absolutely.
Okay, it'll be put on the next agenda, uh, meeting up for the sixth.
Thank you.
Hey, what do we got next?
I think it's me, Commissioner. So, um, I've got, uh, three documents that, uh, you guys should have seen, uh, two program agreements, uh, and one, uh, general terms and conditions that go with that, uh, all from DCYF. Uh, these are yearly grants that we get through DCYF, uh, to help support probation functions over in juvenile. Uh, uh, for the one, which is our block grant, and then the other one is the evidence-based, uh, expansion, uh, program agreement. And that's to provide, uh, evidence-based services. Uh, the unique thing about this, uh, is that DCYF wanted these documents back and signed. Um, but there is no, uh, dollar amount attached to it yet. Um, that's not, uh, totally unique, um, that's happened in years past. Uh, but what I can tell you is that the current amount that's going to expire at the end of, uh, June, uh, for both these, one was a hundred and twenty-two thousand for the block grant and the other was about thirty-one thousand. Uh, I expect probably both those are going to go down a little bit, uh, on this next one, but, uh, I just ask that, uh, you guys, uh, approve that on the next, uh, consent agenda.
Any questions on that, Commissioners?
Nope, it's good with me.
I'm good.
Okay, so we will make that happen as well. What else you got?
I think that's it for the courts.
Okay. Do you have any questions for them, Commissioners?
Nope, appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
So currently, right now, uh, we have a, a break scheduled for later, Community Service, not till ten thirty. Uh, Diane, do you mind? I was just trying to text you, but we got done even quicker. Do you mind, uh, reaching out and seeing if we can move, uh, either one of those earlier and we'll take a break for five minutes and come back?
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you. So Commissioners, we will take a break, uh, uh, till, let's give us a few more minutes. Let's go to ten, uh, five. Does that work for you?
Yep.
Okay, we, we are holding off till ten five. Thank you. Everybody, let's go ahead and, uh, kick this back into gear. We're going to go ahead and start with, uh, um, Community Services and Kel Rowan will be running the meeting. Kel?
Hello, good morning. Um, I will start with Marissa.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning, Marissa.
Morning. Um, so we, we have two, uh, requests, um, this morning. One of them is a correction to our future land use map and official development areas map. Uh, three of ten. Um, we actually had an applicant come in about a month and a half, two months ago, and he came into the permanent assistance office asking what he could do with his property and was quite surprised to learn that it was actually his own long-term commercial forest land. He then got in contact with me. I did a little bit of research and found out by looking at our, um, working maps from the mid nineties that, um, the parcel was actually outside of long-term commercial forest land, not inside. Um, so, and I also talked to a, another senior planner who was, uh, present at the time of designating the parcels' long-term commercial forest, and he said it would not have qualified at that time as long-term commercial forest. Um, so we're seeing this is more of a correction to our maps, um, not an actual rezone. Um, the parcel is numbers two, two, three, three, five, four, four, and then like zero, five zeros. Um, it's been in private ownership since about the mid eighties. Um, and we're looking to, uh, rezone it to rural residential five, hopefully. What it, what it should be, um, the adjacent parcels, they're also zone rural residential five. Um, and you, uh, you should have the, the map showing the location of this particular parcel. Um, the first one is the map air correction and the future land use map. And then that very last map is the old um, working maps from the mid nineties that were prepared. And the particular parcel in question is the one circled there in the orange. And, um, we are hoping to get this placed on the July sixth action agenda, um, to get a notice of hearing for August seventeenth to consider this correction.
How does this affect the pa- past taxes on it? Is there any effect on that since it was our mistake?
Mel, do you know about the tax?
I don't, and it would, it would depend on if, um, the assessors have it taxed as designated forest lands. Um, they may or may not. So it would just depend on.
I think it does say designated forest lands on it. I think it does say designated forest lands on it.
I'll be curious to find out, when you find out how that works. Uh, again, it wasn't their fault, so I'd hope we don't penalize it too much. Okay, what else you got? Are you, uh, Commissioners, everybody in favor with putting that on the agenda? Sorry.
I am.
I'm good. I was just coming, or looking at the, the map, and they had lovely printing back then.
It's pretty impressive. Okay, what do you have next?
Okay, so the second one is a, a rezone, a request for rezone from Bruce Lyon. Um, he's, also has a business, business called Lund Custom Machining Incorporated. Um, this is to place on the July sixth action agenda for a public hearing on August third. This parcel is parcel four-two-zero-one-eight, one-four-zero-zero-zero-three-zero, and it's off of West Shelton Matlock Road. You have the maps there, um, that was with the packet. They're requesting to rezone, um, from commercial, rural commercial one to rural industrial. This particular parcel is, um, kind of surrounded by what was this, the, the Dayton Hamlet. Um, and it was also the location of the Lager's Bar and Grill. It, which is no longer there. If they demoed it just recently, a month or two back. So they are hoping to rezone it to rural industrial. And they're hoping to put a, uh, a building in, in approximately the existing footprint for a, uh, machine, machining business there. So about fifty-seven hundred square feet. Um, and I think they're going to have six full-time and two part-time employees there. So, um, and of course, they would have to, um, they had to rezone rural industrial to, um, allow for, uh, manufacturing on the site. The PAC did, uh, uh, approve the recommendation to you all on our June twenty-first meeting.
Now, historically across the street, they used to have businesses there, uh, for many years. I don't know whether they were ever actually zoned for, but they've always had businesses in those metal buildings out there.
Yeah, I think there's, it, it seems like across the road, a little bit to the right of the, the subject parcel, there seems to be some metal buildings, and I do believe that they're doing some auto repair, some kind of shop there. I don't know any of the back history on it though, but it appears that they're, they have it repaired.
Kevin, that's your area out there. Do you have a specific, uh, feeling on any of this?
I don't. Um, just curious if there was any public comment received at the planning commission level?
We didn't receive any public comments on it. Um, that, we had a CEPA comment period. We got general comments from, um, Department of Ecology and the PUD there, but nothing, no concerns and no public comment at all. I think they did a pretty good job of reaching out to the neighbors, um, prior to even applying.
Yeah.
You comfortable with putting it on, Kevin?
I am, yep.
Commissioner Trask, do you have anything, or?
Isn't that the, the bar that the, the fire department practiced on?
I think so, yeah.
It used to actually be an awesome restaurant, believe it or not. Restaurant bar, long time, tough one though. If you didn't go in there, half snocker, they'd knock you out.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
I'll go ahead and go next, and then I'll hand it over to Lydia. Not sure what their, um, what they've got on for briefings this morning, but, um, so I just wanted to give you, I don't have a whole lot of information right now, but, uh, just give you a quick update on the Belfair Planned Action Environmental Impact Statement that we're working on, uh, with the Burke Consulting Team. We did publish the draft EIS back at the end of April. And, um, during the comment period, we did receive some comments that will require some additional, um, uh, scoping to, to, uh, to accommodate the, um, the information. Um, so we'll likely do a supplemental EIS, um, with the additional information and then go back out, uh, for a draft comment period. So this will require us to extend the contract with Burke, and it will require an additional, um, budget amendment, although I don't know what the cost is at this time. I know that, uh, Loretta Swanson in our Public Works Department, her team is working on some of that information. Was likely done for the EIS or the wastewater treatment plant back in the, um, you know, two thousand seven, two thousand nine timeframe. And so, you know, getting that information is going to help supplement the information that's necessary, um, and that will determine how much extra we need to add to the budget for the contract. So I will have more information later, and we'll come back with a more formal briefing, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up and let the public know that we're just pausing. Um, we did go to the Planning Advisory Commission, and they were going to make, uh, their recommendation for you, um, at the June twenty-first meeting, but we delayed that. And so we'll, we'll end up taking the supplemental EIS back to the Planning Commission when it's ready, and then, and then, and then you guys will see that, so.
Questions, Commissioners? Thank you very much, Kel.
All right, yep, thanks.
Lydia, you're up.
Good morning, Commissioners. I don't think I have anything on the agenda. Do you have something?
Nope, then it was nice. Any questions for Lydia?
Okay.
Please drive through. Don't forget your french fries.
Thanks, Lydia. I wasn't sure. Dave, Dave said to, uh, uh, and then I didn't, I didn't get a chance to ask him who all had stuff. I just knew me and Marissa.
No, no problem. Thanks, Kel. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
Is anybody else in Community Services, uh, on the health side or anything that has any comments they need to make right now? If so, please unmute yourself and say hi. Hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and move forward into our next part, which is Public Works. Uh, I saw Mike on here, and so Mike, you're up.
We actually do not have anything on the agenda. I was directed to make sure I was available for the board if they had any, uh, questions.
Yeah, just a quick question, Commissioner, if you don't mind.
Please.
So just obviously, the thing everybody's on, everybody's mind is the heat today. How are you guys adjusting? Anything you need? How's it looking?
Well, several of the, uh, the members of the, the, uh, crew have actually opted to, uh, take some time off. So, uh, there were a smaller amount of, of vehicles in the, in the parking lot today, but, uh, the other uh, crew members are, they're working in air-conditioned vehicles. We've got water and, uh, available for them. And around noon here, lunchtime, they're, they're going to talk to them again that if they'd like to take some, uh, uh, similar leave, uh, they could, they could actually take that time off too. So keeping an eye on, we, you know, we've been through these before, um, and so, uh, the guys are pretty comfortable keeping an eye on them.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Maybe the roads have melted.
Have they got the eggs? All right, well, thank you very much, Mike. Uh, Commission Discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, if you have anything you'd like to discuss?
I don't have anything, just waiting for the meeting this afternoon with the Fire Marshals.
I'd love to stick around. I have an audit committee meeting today here, so I'll be, uh, sticking around. Anything further? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved. The second is that we adjourned. Hearing no objection, we are adjourned. Keep cool, everybody.
Take care.